Meeting for April 28 to order. Can we start with a roll call?
Councilmember Harland.
Here.
Councilmember Bertrand.
Here.
Councilmember Termini.
Here.
Mayor Botter.
Here. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
We'll begin with a report on closed session.
Yes, thank you Mayor Botter, members of the city council. There were three items on this evening's closed session, all related to pending litigation. The first item is the matter of Teresa Klepper versus the City of Capitola. The second matter is the case of Tuka Gaffair versus the City of Capitola. And the third item is the people of the State of California and City of Capitola versus Thomas M. D'Angelo and Rosa Z. D'Angelo. Those are all pending litigation matters in which the city council received reports from legal counsel, and there was no reportable action.
Thank you very much. City Clerk, do we have any additional materials?
No, there was no additional material, thank you.
And Mr. City Manager, any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Staff has no changes.
Okay, with that, we'll go to a public comment period. This is the time when we allow people to come and speak on any item that is not on the agenda. You'll be allowed three minutes to speak. Please come to the podium, sign in with your name, and tell us what city you're from. Is there anybody who would like to speak at the public comment period? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period. We'll move on to city council comments. Any city council comments?
Sure. First of all, those of you who are still charter customers, all 14 of you in the City of Capitola, you were out of service this morning and it was restored this afternoon. Hopefully, it doesn't happen too often. I'm sure that the mayor will bring us up on the Public Works activities, because I am thrilled with how much Public Works is handling right now.
I'm going to save that for the Public Works.
Good. Operation Surf, a week and a half ago on our beach, we had the folks, the military from Vets Hospital in Texas invited to our beach. We taught them how to surf. Some of them knew already, but some were newcomers, and it was just inspiring and kind of gets your priorities straight to see that. That was a function of the Capitola Safety Foundation, seeing 16 veterans, most of whom were amputees or multiple amputees, getting up on surfboards and just charging the brake. It was just amazing. Finally, it's been 16 years we've had a branch library in Capitola, and for the first time, we have a Friends of the Capitola Branch Library Organization. So please, join the Friends of the Library, hear what's going on, and visit our branch. Thank you.
Councilmember Bertrand. Right. Yeah, definitely on my mind. Went to Vision Capitola, wonderful effort, grassroots, multiple people, 150 to 200 was the estimate, the first session. Could have been around the same for the second session at J Street Park or Open Cliffs. To me, one of the biggest takeaways was the fact that people showed up. Now, for a lot of people, go down the street, you'll see, hey, I saw you Vision Capitola, might start a conversation. You know, it's one of the things that starts and builds communities. So, the effort that was started by Gail, Sue, Nell's Weffsman, and a whole group of other people, I think there was about 30 people, that if you got a notice on your door, it was one of those 30, you'd put it there. So there's a lot of different things that came out of that, and the report will be forthcoming, so I won't jump to that. I'm also on the senior council, and we're starting an initiative to elevate the concerns of seniors in this community, one of the largest growing population segments, and the needs of seniors are often understated. So we're planning a senior forum in time for the election. We're going to do it in conjunction with other groups in the county here, so that it's cross-organizational. Oh, Ed and I went to the Breakfast Club, which was, you probably have some comments on that, and I'm still working on the Central Coast Collaborative, and at some point, I hope to pass it off to Rich. I was on the organizing committee, and the part that I took was the bylaws. I did push for something that would come from each reason, so there's three counties or more, and so each county will have its own advocacy committee, so organizations in that area, issues that come out of those organizations in that area, will be able to flow up to the top board of directors, and that's it.
Great. Councilman Harland.
When I went to the Second Harvest Food Bank annual dinner this year, they gave an award to the Teen Kitchen Project, and I wasn't familiar with that, but I have become a little bit familiar with it. And it sounds like a wonderful service, and if any people in Capitola can use their services, I would encourage them to get in touch with them. It's a nonprofit agency. The food is, I think, mostly donated by the Second Harvest Food Bank. They teach the young people how to cook delicious nourishing meals, and then they provide these meals to people that are in need, are in crisis, just gotten out of the hospital, don't have anybody at home to help them, they don't qualify for Meals on Wheels or whatever. But it's, they're having a fundraiser this weekend, but it's a really interesting program that I hope that we can get some of our students interested in, because it's great job training for them. So, their goal is to help clients stay well-nourished in order to lessen side effects, increase positive treatment outcomes, help them recover more quickly after treatment is over. It aims to teach clients that nutritious whole foods can be the foundation for their healing. They serve 50 clients and families in San Cruz at a time. They give priority to clients who are economically disadvantaged, to those with children, to those people living alone without any support, and to those who do not qualify for any other meal program, such as Meals on Wheels. So, you can get free meals for clients for up to 12 weeks. Anyway, if you're interested in learning more about it, check out their website, and just keep your eyes open. If there's some way that Capitola can help this teen kids, children's teen program over in SoCal, get some of our kids involved with it, it would be, I think it would be a neat. It would be a neat program, and we could expand the number of services that they provide to the community, too. So, just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Great, thank you. Sure, go ahead.
I'd just like to point out some recognition where I think it's due. Probably you noticed, the chief has gone out in the back, usually out there in the table there. He's at a conference right now at Aptos High School, and he's talking about some of the issues that youth are presented with as they're growing up in high school. So, kudos to the police chief for being there and participating in that forum. I think it's great.
Thank you. Last week, on April 16th, while Councilman Termini was helping the Operation Surf program, I was fortunate enough to join Peter Wilk and the Commission on the Environment on my hands and knees in Perry Park, pulling up English ivy. And I want to put a big thank you to the group that came out there. We had about 10 college and high school students out there pulling weeds and ivy, and obviously, that's the kind of thing where the more people you have, the more work you get done. And they belong to a group, and I love this, their name is called Think Tanked, and I want to mention their names, Russell McCallow, Colin Nickel, Wesley Pearson, Jada Cho, Joe Cutler, Alicia Balster-Gee, and David Taveras. And just want to say thank you for coming out to Capitola and doing that work. And Richard, I'm not going to leave you hanging, Richard Lippi in the audience was also there pulling weeds, and everybody needs some recognition, so thank you for your time. The only other thing I have is, Mr. City Manager, over the past couple of weeks, seem to be getting inundated with proclamation requests, and I was wondering if we could direct staff to look into some kind of a proclamation policy, so we could come back and discuss it here on this council, and come up with something that seems to streamline that process.
No problem, we can do that.
Okay, great. With that, I'll move on to city treasurer comments.
Getting ready for budget time. We're going to start looking at the budget, so I just would ask if there's folks in the audience or out there that want us to consider things in the budget, then come on to some city council meetings and let us know. That's it.
Great, thank you. And any staff comments, Mr. City Manager?
I think I just, we'd like to get an update from our Public Works Director about the status of CIP projects.
I think we're all awaiting that news. Have a big smile on your face.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Let's see, McGregor Park, they will be pouring the base of the skate park element, starting next week. Expected to take two weeks to get that poured. They had a team of finishers coming in, so that'll be going forward. And then the fencing will start going in, and we're looking to have some soft openings there in June. And the bike park's probably going to be one of the last parts that gets constructed as a contractor, as a separate contractor than the one building the rest of the park. It's busy, but we're trying, all the pieces are starting to come together there. Stockton Avenue, they've completed the last section of sidewalk this week. They have quite a bit of paving and restriping to do, probably be a couple more weeks before we get that in place. And I do believe they're still waiting for the streetlights to come in, so finishing details might take a little longer, but I think the sidewalk looks really good up there. 38th Avenue, I don't know if you heard, it got paved today, it was closed all day. Traffic was not fun over there, but we got it paved. Started about 7:00 this morning, finished about 5:00 this evening. So we've got fresh pavement on 38th Avenue. Again, they'll let that cure, then they have to come in and do the striping on there. Rosedale paving, the contractor has been sent the contracts, we're waiting to get them back. I anticipate that'll be about three to four weeks before they begin on that. And then the final one that's under construction is the Rispin ADA Phase II. We're doing our walkthrough on Monday with the contractor, we'll have a start-up date pretty soon on that.
That's great news.
Just a little side, Stephanie and I were doing some S. leafleting and putting out signs and stuff like that, and invariably, as we went down one street after another, a lot of people kept asking us about, when's this street going to get paved, you know, when are you going to come in our, you know? So we kept saying, you know, in time it'll come, and we're working on Park, and we're working on 38th. And then Wednesday at Vision Capitola, someone said, I'd like to see on the website a schedule when projects are going to be, you were there, so you probably heard it, and is that something we could get on the website so people could have a sense of when their street's going to be paved and when the projects are going to be attended to?
So we have, what we've done in the past is we have a five-year schedule of streets, and right now, we're in about the third or fourth year of our, last time we updated our pavement management schedule. We don't have a schedule for every street in the city on when it's going to be paved. Following this year, I was going to do an update of our pavement management plan, which will then develop another five years. I'll put the schedule we have now, only goes out a couple more years, and then when we do an update, we'll have another five-year update on that, and yes, we can put that on the web.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Thank you, great news. Any other staff comments?
Oh, I had a couple comments.
Oh, great.
I just want to let you know, we're currently doing recruitment for the Architecture and Site Review for a landscape architect, and we still have an opening on the Commission on Environment for a student, and we have an opening on the Capitola Historical Museum Board for a new board member. Thank you.
Okay, great. Any report from council members, how many boards or commissions that they sit on?
I have one from the Seniors Council Area Agency on Aging. They have a 2016 senior fact sheet that's pretty interesting, and I'm not going to read the whole thing, I have copies of this for you, but my point is, I hope we can incorporate some of these in our work plan for this year and in the coming years, in the general plan, in the zoning, wherever we can, because we're going to have this population that's going to have a lot of needs, and we need to plan for it, and we're not doing that right now. The 60-plus population has increased 37% since 2011. 7,500 of the county's 61,000 seniors are eligible for Medicare. 8% of the population consumes 75% of the healthcare costs, with the vast majority being seniors with chronic conditions. Californians are turning 65 every day for the next 15 years. The California population growth of all ages is 4.7%, however, seniors age 85% are growing more than twice as fast. The 65 to 74 range group is growing even faster with a 20, almost 27% growth projection. So, anyway, they've done, they've done a lot of interviews and tried to get, do a needs assessment for the county, and so we have that information, we have the facts, we just have to have sort of an action plan. And I know we're all up to our eyeballs in, you know, work, we're doing more than we can, but if there's some way we can keep this in the back of our minds in what we're doing with the City of Capitola, streets, sidewalks, transportation, housing, the environment, everything, we just need to keep that in mind. So I'll pass these out to you. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Mike, any other commission?
Yeah, the senior council, which I'm on, did this survey, we do it every year, and I noticed one of the supervisors here in the county, this is out here, Bruce, so we're trying to keep these issues in front of people. The seniors often, you know, sort of take care of themselves, but their needs are really high, and they're going to become more apparent, as just Stephanie said, the population increases. So they're not in your face all the time, like maybe other groups in this society that obviously need help, but they're there. So we're starting the effort to make a senior forum across different groups, and we're going to push these issues so that the people that have some access to budget decisions and policy decisions will think of these issues as we move forward. Thank you.
Mike, any comments? Okay, with that, we'll move on to the consent calendar. These are items that are normally considered routine and are acted upon in one motion. Does anybody from the council like to pull anything on the consent?
I have a question on C.
Okay, go ahead.
Anybody want to pull anything else?
Mike, any?
I'll move consent.
Second.
Pending. Motion and a second. Go ahead.
My question is of the planning director. We need to see where the proposed skateboard board park is going to go, the actual physical structure of it, if it happens. So, but, and so we need to have some kind of staking, signage, spray on the ground, you know, some flagging, whatever works, but just, we just need to have some of these. What are your thoughts about that?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Yeah, we will mark the site, and right now, we're evaluating the revised location based on the Planning Commission decision on that project and the staff recommendation. So once that's defined, we will mark the site so the public can go out there and see where it's going to be, and, or at least proposed to be in its dimensions.
Okay.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to pull anything on the consent agenda? Seeing that, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That'll take us on to the general government public hearings, and first on our list is an appeal of the Planning Commission approval of a design permit, 4980 Garnet Street. This is Ryan, you going to give us this presentation?
Good evening, councilmembers. So before you is an appeal of a Planning Commission decision to approve a design permit and variance permit for a garage addition and minor remodel at 4980 Garnet Street. Neighbor has appealed the project due to the variance portion of the permit. The existing home is located in the R1 Single Family Zoning District, located within the Jewel Box neighborhood. So here you can see the existing and proposed front facade of the home. The proposed home addition includes converting the existing two-car carport into a garage and replacing existing decks with smaller decks throughout, and also creating a new entryway along the front elevation. The applicant is seeking a variance to extend the proposed garage six feet into the required 20-foot front yard setback. So here's the site plan. The applicant is proposing two covered parking spaces within the garage by extending the front elevation of the first story five feet forward. The plan would create two full-size covered parking spaces, shown in blue, and the new garage would increase the existing non-conforming front yard setback. The two, or the uncovered parking spaces in the front of the home would decrease from 19 feet to 14 feet in depth. It should be noted that there is an additional 12 feet of unutilized right-of-way between the property line, shown in green, and the curb in purple. As proposed, the garage would be located 26 feet from the curb. After considering the staff report and testimony from the public, sorry, from the applicant and members of the public, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve the design permit and variance request. The Planning Commission based their decision on the fact that the project will not be the grant of a special privilege due to the non-conforming setbacks of neighboring properties, and that the subject property will be able to utilize the sidewalk exempt right-of-way in front of the property for uncovered parking. The Planning Commission felt that the impact on the neighborhood was minimal, and that the project would enhance the existing character of the neighborhood by replacing the existing carport with a covered garage. On February 16th, the city received an appeal of the Planning Commission decision. The appeal cites concerns with the impact to the existing character of the surrounding neighborhood, and that the garage variance would constitute the granting of a special privilege. Staff does not feel that this would have a negative impact on the neighborhood due to the 12 other non-conforming properties throughout Garnet Street that do not comply with the front yard setback requirements, and that the carport conversion into a covered garage will mesh well with the design of the existing neighborhood. In addition, staff does not feel that this is the grant of a special privilege due to the previously mentioned 12 other properties in the vicinity, which are under identical zoning, and enjoy privileges of the decreased front yard setbacks. So the city council first reviewed this application two weeks ago, on the April 14, 2016 hearing, and indicated their intention to uphold the Planning Commission's decision to approve the design permit and variance application. However, the council noted a discrepancy between the proposed floor plans and elevations, specifically the placement of the front door. City council asked that the applicant revise the plans to address this discrepancy, and then be continued to the April 28 hearing. So the applicant submitted revised plans on April 19 of this year, which adjusted the floor plan to show the correct location of the front door. Here you can see the front entry plan changes for the first floor. The bathroom was relocated, highlighted in yellow, and the storage area was removed in the garage. The revised project plans now accurately depict the front entry wall, which contains an entrance to an exterior courtyard area in the side yard. You can see that access with the green arrows. The courtyard contains a trellis cover and provides a concrete walkway to the main entrance, which is located off of the side yard. So here you can see the east side elevations, which show this entry area. The original plans are on the top, revised on the bottom. The doorways and window locations have been revised, specifically, the side garage entrance has been removed, shown in red, and the side entrance door and bathroom window have slightly moved due to the floor plan modifications, highlighted in yellow. The applicant has also proposed to remove the exterior stair wall, which is highlighted, in response to neighbor concerns. So the main entrance of the home has now moved from the rear yard second-story deck to this side yard entryway. Staff recommends that the city council uphold the Planning Commission approval of the variance due to the existing non-conforming setbacks throughout Garnet Street, the presence of 12 additional feet of unutilized right-of-way between the property line and the curb, and because the garage enclosure will complement the existing character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, if anybody from the public would like to come up and speak, this is the time.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'm David Aaron, I'm the owner of 4980 Garnet. Apologize for the paperwork snafu. Indeed, I walked the property on Monday with Mr. Gressley, who was a neighbor who came to the hearing, and correctly identified that we had the wrong, the wrong plans, they weren't as he and I had discussed. So Monday, we walked the property with the corrected plans, and I believe he's satisfied. Does anyone have any questions?
Go ahead.
Shows the front entrance door a little bit above the grade, above the ground, it's not like, is it going to be a step there? It doesn't have anything depicting how you're going to get up?
Yeah, that's just.
Yeah, okay. Is that normal?
Step in landing?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sure your neighbor's happy you removed those stairs.
Yes, yes, it was a great joy, I'm sure.
Any other questions?
Thank you, thank you for changing your plan.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak on this issue?
I'm Burke Calderella, I've led the next door on the other side. I do have a question of the council and the building department. Why do we have a setback in the first place? I mean, it seems to be, if you need a variance, you'll just give it, so why do we have this setback? It doesn't make any sense to me, I'm really confused about this. Can you explain it to me?
I'm going to let the Community Development Director explain the idea of a variance, in general terms to you.
So setbacks are established in neighborhoods to provide some relief from adjacent residences, streets, but there is a variance procedure. It's embedded in state law, it's used by all agencies throughout California, which does allow exceptions to those standard setback requirements. This was the case in this project, and it was processed accordingly.
So, by existing structures, prior to 30 years or older, encroaching on the setback, I don't know when the date was set, but our house is 30 years old, and it's built in the proper setback. I guess if I want to extend my garage out six feet, I can do that?
Sir, I'll answer that question up here. What was explained there is that we have a policy for a variance. Any person can apply for a variance, and each variance will be dealt with separately. There's no guarantee that your variance would be approved, you have the right.
The precedent's been set.
Well, the precedents look at each variance individually, and that's what was done in this case. There's no, and that's, and in your case, it would be looked at, and they, like was done in this case, they looked at other examples in the neighborhood, and they use that in their criteria to make a recommendation.
It would follow all of the criteria that's going on here, correct?
Yeah, I, sorry, I don't know what your plans look like, I don't know what your intention of what you do.
I'll submit plans.
You have the right to do that, that's your prerogative, and you would go through the process, you would go through the Planning Commission, they would make recommendations, the Planning Commission in this case approved it, and it came to us. And you have the same right to do that, but we couldn't hypothetically tell you what would happen until the plans were submitted and actually was looked at by staff. Would you like to add to that, or the city attorney's going to add to that?
Yes, sir, this is an opportunity for you to address the city council with your comments on this proposed variance. It's really not a question-and-answer session, and so I just caution the council, it's really not appropriate to engage in a dialogue. It's not really an opportunity for you to ask these types of questions. You can certainly make whatever comments about this project that you want concerning the project.
Well, it's very unfortunate that. Well, it's very unfortunate that...
You should address your comments to the City Council, though.
I'd be very happy to, I'd be very happy to meet with you tomorrow and have a conversation, try to explain to you.
Great, what time tomorrow?
Do we have your contact information there?
Yes, you do.
Is it there?
I'll be available tomorrow. I would like to talk to you.
Yeah, great. Great, do we have your number there? I can call you?
Michael, you as well, since you're in the building industry.
Did you leave your name and information? Did you write it down on the form right there?
Certainly.
Okay, I'll call you tomorrow.
We'll get in touch with you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on this item?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Richard Lippi. I live at 620 Monterey Avenue, and I'll be brief. I just wanted to compliment Mr. Safdie on his presentation tonight, and I think that your PowerPoint was very illustrative of the changes. I like, I like the coloring. I think that brings it out, and I want to say you did a wonderful job. You made it very clear. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment, and bring it back for recommendations.
First of all, I'll move the staff recommendation for the variance. Second, under discussion, I think it, by the way, the basis is due to non-conforming structures in the neighborhood, he would not be being granted a special privilege, and also will enhance the neighborhood in general. And speaking of enhancing the neighborhood, the removal of the second-story deck is very significant in this project. We tend to frown on the reverse floor plan with a large living area outside deck in the second story. This all but removes that. That is great. The stairway is gone, the front deck is reduced, and in all aspects, this vastly improves this particular residence. And that is all I have to, oh, one caution, please, and this is to the designer and to the building and planning department. When the construction documents come to us, please make absolutely certain it meets the applied documents exactly. Any changes whatsoever in the elevations, and I'm not talking about inside of a wall here, wall there, I don't really care about the inside, if the outside changes in any way, it needs to come back before this body, period. I expect to see what is drawn is what is built, and that is it. Thank you.
Doc, any comments?
Yeah, I did go out and walk the street and talked to about three, four neighbors, and I think it was really interesting that at least two that were against it have since changed their mind. I agree with Michael. I think overall it'll improve the neighborhood. Definitely make the front. If you look at the adjacent house, it's very similar. It's gonna be very strikingly different. It's gonna look modern, nice, bright design, so, but I would like to say that the, one neighbor that did make a complaint, and her, and why did, I just talked to her, their house is setback a bit, so I could see why, you know, the fact that it's gonna be encroaching in a sense closer to the street, that that neighbor would have a complaint. But I think overall, the whole street, both sides are gonna look much better because of this.
It's gonna be a great project, and I'm thrilled that the changes were made.
I just want to thank you for making an attempt to be a good neighbor. And with that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good luck with that project. Takes us to item B, which is a Community Choice Energy Status Report, being presented by... Jenny?
This, Jamie, is this the city manager? Mr. Grunno's gonna be introduced. Okay, Mr. Grunno.
Thanks again, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Just by way of background, as council may recall, in January 2013, you directed staff to participate in the Community Choice Energy Feasibility Study. You may recall back then, we referred to it as Community Choice Aggregation, but we're now referring it to energy, just so it's a little more intuitive to the general public. The Community Choice Energy Program would allow cities and counties to participate to purchase and/or generate electricity for its residents, and to invest the profits that are made from that in local green energy projects, thereby creating local jobs, as contrasted by for-profit utilities that often, you know, put those profits into their shareholders. City staff over the last three years has participated in the CCE Project Development Advisory Committee to help guide the process to develop the feasibility study. This month, we passed a major milestone when the feasibility study was completed. The feasibility study did conclude that the CCE is a viable option for the Monterey Bay region, that it could provide cleaner energy at general rate parity with Pacific Gas and Electric, and that it would also provide local economic benefits. Importantly for the city of Capitola, as you recall, when we adopted our Climate Action Plan last year, the CCE was the single most effective measure we had to reduce the city's GHD inventory. So it's a measure that we have adopted in our Climate Action Plan, and we've gone a long way to seeing it actually go into place. We are privileged tonight to have with us Supervisor Bruce McPherson and Jenny Johnson of his staff, and they're gonna provide a little more details about the program momentarily. Thank you.
With that, come on up.
Good evening. I'm County Supervisor Bruce McPherson, and first of all, I want to say it's been a pleasure to serve with you on the council and various agencies, whether it be library, senior citizens in council, or transportation. But this is something that, right after I was elected in 2012, that I said, I'd like to really address this. It's a form of energy production or distribution that was allowed through state legislation several years ago. From that time that that's happened, some other counties have done it. Marin was the first one out of the gate to really give it a go, and has done very well. Sonoma County has done even better. It learned from some of the ins and outs of what Marin had to go through, and the city of Lancaster in Southern California has done it, and is very successful as well. When I was first elected, I said, I want to try this for Santa Cruz County, because I think it would be something that would be well-received, and really very environmentally sensitive and sensible, as well as economically in parity with anything that we have now from delivering energy to us right now. After I had talked a little more, and had, and you'll hear from Jenny Johnson in a moment with more detailed information, I said, you know, I think we can go beyond the four cities in the city, or in the county of Santa Cruz and the county itself. I know some of these folks that I've had the pleasure of representing when I was a state legislator, and so I reached, we reached out to San Bernardino County and Monterey County. So now we're including three counties with 18 cities, and there's some special districts as well. Each of them had expressed interest, as was stated here just recently, for Capitola, and we're very, very pleased that we are able now to say just what it can do. And that's because we've been working for three years on a feasibility study to show us how can this energy be produced with renewables with parity to what's being produced by PG&E in our, in our region. Well, the feasibility study has come back, was completed just about, what, two months ago, and in essence, it shows that we can create a system in which we are relying twice as much on renewable energy sources at parity with what the charges are, and I think they may well be lower than what is charged to us now. So that is very, very good. I think it's something else to say that how well we have planned this and how we've gone about it, because the cost has been zero for local agencies. San Mateo County right now is going through the same process as a county alone with its, I think it's 18 cities in its county. They took $800,000 out of our general fund to create or complete its feasibility study. We got a state, we received a state grant for more than $350,000, raised some money. We have spent zero from any general fund in this county to get to where we are today. I'm very proud of that. A Scotsman would always be proud of something like that.
(laughing)
So there's a couple factors. It's clearly environmentally a proper thing to do, and I think will be well-received in our region and the tri-county area, and I do think it's gonna be economically feasible too, as the feasibility study said. But also, another aspect that was mentioned is that this will be governed by a local agency, a JPA yet to be formed. My guesstimate on how this would be implemented would probably take to about a year and a half from now, we would be online and ready to go. I can't say enough about who you're gonna hear from now, who has lived and slept for three years this, Jenny Johnson of my staff, formerly of Ecology Action, who is the team leader, and other, and other members of the PDAC, the committee, the Project Development Advisory Committee, phenomenal group of people that have put in hours and hours of time to get it right, and to get it really, with a cost of zero, to get here. So there's three big pluses: environment, economy, and local government, governance. And I think we have something to look forward to that is gonna be very successful. We have a lot of interest. We are going now to each of the governing agencies to present in more detail as quickly as we can to you, and we welcome your questions. I thank you for your willingness to say, yeah, we're interested in this previously, and I think you're gonna find this is gonna be a tremendous project for the people of Santa Cruz County, for the city of Capitola, and for the whole tri-county region. And if it should come to pass with the tri-county region being involved in this, it'll be the largest one of its type in the state of California. So we feel very good about that, and now I'd like to introduce Jenny Johnson, who is really the one that has guided this process through the last three years. And believe me, she's put tremendous amount of time in it, so I'd like to have her explain to it in a little more detail. Thank you.
Thanks for that presentation.
I have my slide deck over. Okay, good. Well, we have a slide deck, but between Rich and Bruce, you've heard just about everything I have to say. So I'm gonna keep my slide deck short and sweet. I don't want to kill you with a presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions, and then we want to talk about next steps. One of the things I want to highlight is why do we investigate this? Well, because half of our greenhouse gas comes from our electricity. And so if we can make that, we can get our electricity from renewable resources, we can literally cut our greenhouse gas emissions in half. The other half comes from transportation. And so that's a more longer-term strategy. We all know that, to get folks out of their cars, to do something that's more sustainable. So this is the one thing that we can do in the short term before we hit the tipping point for those of us who definitely believe in climate change. And I've spoken to a few lately that don't. Are you doing this, Rich, or am I doing? Okay, great. Let's go forward. As Bruce said, we have all 21 of the counties and cities in our region. We have a private partner in terms of funding from the community foundation of Santa Cruz County, who is gracious enough to accept private donations in addition to the almost $400,000 in grants that we raised, and three of our main JPAs in the area, which would be the Salinas Valley Solar Waste Authority, the Monterey Regional Waste Management District, and our Air Quality Control District. As Rich said, this is what Community Choice Aggregation is, and I want for members of the public and television audience to understand that a local agency can procure greener electricity, on-rate parity, or cost savings. PG&E is still a partner in the process. They will still deliver that energy and do all the customer service, everything that they're doing now, even the billing, but we will give our community a choice. PG&E will still be here. They will still be available to offer electricity. So basically, this is an opportunity to allow our community a choice, and that's what we're excited about. Why we investigated it, Bruce went over most of it. We want to look at, we wanted to look at local control over our rates, more transparent accountability, because with the local board, our citizens can come and speak to that board about what they would like to see in terms of the priorities and their rates and the complementary programs. It allows a much greater use of renewable resources, and of course, the three in our area are primarily solar, wind, and biomass, and that would be the organics that we're still burying in our landfills. They can be converted into clean energy, and that's a really exciting opportunity. The greatest reduction in greenhouse gases, as Rich said, this is your number-one priority, and is in all the climate action plans throughout our region. And then, of course, it creates local jobs. This local agency, after your startup debt is paid off, does book a surplus. Our analysis says that we can book a surplus somewhere between eight and a half and nine and a half million dollars per year. That money can be used to do a lot of complementary programs governed by a local board informed by our citizenry. That could lower rates, that could buy greener electricity, that can create local projects, renewable projects, which creates local jobs. And I can think of a dozen other complementary programs, but those are the main ones. I want to talk a little bit about Marin Clean Energy and Sonoma Clean Power. These are the two, there's three established CCEs in the state. These are the two oldest ones. I think this is really important for all of us to understand sort of the bookends of success. Marin is now serving 80% of their total customers, over 70,000 customers, with an annual budget of $146 million. They have a 50% renewable portfolio as their normal product versus 30% from PG&E, and they're on comparable rates, and all of their startup debt is paid off. Sonoma is a similar success story. They've only been live for two years, and in that two years, they are now serving 89% of the customers, over 196,000 customers, with an annual budget of $166 million. They have just booked their most recent end of their fiscal year with $30 million of surplus in the bank. They are debt-free except for a $1.3 million loan. I think their water department sort of likes the interest they're making on the loan, I imagine that's from their startup. And they're a 36% renewable portfolio versus 30% from PG&E. Why are they so much lower than Sonoma? Because they chose to do lower their rates. They are 8% less than PG&E. So that's exciting. So really what we've been doing for the last three years with the help of Rich and the rest of the committee members, which is 15 members from around the region, is we have been investigating whether or not Community Choice Energy is right for our region, for our cities and counties to aggregate our purchasing power and offer that as a choice. And so we've already talked about many of these things, the benefits of possible local governance, clean energy, lowering our greenhouse gas, creating local jobs with local revenues that are surplus. At this point, I just want to note what our next steps are. So we have a document that we've produced. This text study is about 150 pages. We've done an independent peer review of that text study, so we have independent analysis of that available, and we've gathered all the other documents that your council and your executive staff are going to need to examine and analyze to make a decision as to whether Capitola wants to move forward and join and move forward with other partners. That's a 300-page document. It's a lot of complex information. So what we've done is we've scheduled three special study sessions targeted at the public and yourselves and your executive staff, so that you have an opportunity to have face time with our cadre of consultants, and all of them will be there, as well as CCE experts from around the state will also be there. On May 24th in Monterey County at their Board of Supervisors' chambers, at 9:30 will be the first morning session. Then there will be two sessions on June 9th, one in your Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors' chambers, one in the San Bernardino County Board of Supervisors' chambers at 3:00 PM that same day. So I invite you, members of the public, your executive staff, to attend those special study sessions, act you've had a chance to review, I wouldn't imagine, all 300 pages, but the first 50 pages perhaps, the summary of everything else, and then you'll have an opportunity to ask all the questions that you're gonna need to ask in order to make that decision to form. So at this point, I'm gonna stop rattling and give you an opportunity to answer questions.
Questions? Go ahead, Mike.
So Jenny has had a meeting today at PG&E, and this came up because I'm very excited about it, and they said, best-case scenario, at least two years. Tell me you can do this quicker.
Well, I think if we build the proper organizational capacity, Mr. Turmanee, I think it can totally be done quicker. So Sonoma took two years to get to 89% of the customers. It's gonna take at least a year to get to 60% of our customers because of the size of our region.
Now, when would be the rollout?
The rollout?
When could we?
Oh, when we can actually provide electricity to a segment of our, next summer.
Perfect.
Sorry, summer of 2017.
I was standing on that, and they said, you're all wet. It's gonna be at least two years, so.
Well, um...
Make them wrong, please, for me.
I would, I, I'll do my best.
Thank you.
But I will say that we have done a great deal of work in learning lessons and best practices from the existing CCAs. We've focused on that tremendously, and so I think that we're, now that we gathered the right information, I've been told by CCE experts, we have a more comprehensive packet of information than any other nascent effort has put together. So this is gonna allow us to move faster to form, and then it allows us to provide electricity sometime in 2017.
Thank you. Is there any questions?
You know, we had a company here a year, long time ago, and I want to say it was Green Mountain Energy or something like that for a couple of years, and I purchased there. It was higher, it was, it cost more, but, you know, it was, it was more renewable. And they were only around for, do you remember that at all?
I do remember.
Yeah, that was neat, and then, I'm sorry that it went away, and they didn't have the infrastructure, I think.
A nice, a nice option, yeah. I mean, really, what we've learned with the established CCEs is really what not to do, and actually, as much as I admire Mountain Energy, I thought they did a great job. They came into there with a business plan that was not enough capital to really make it work long-term. But you need the power of local government to really have that purchasing power, and we need each other in this region. We need all... We need all 21 of our partners eventually, maybe not all at once, but a good number of them initially. Those partners that come forward to help form will have all the say-so on how we form in terms of governance. And that's going to be really critical as we move forward building organizational capacity.
Josh, any questions?
Yep. I attended the meeting, Santa Cruz City Chambers, when the feasibility study was rolled out. So there seemed to be a three-year scenario presentation towards success. If you could comment on that. My takeaway from what you're saying right now, that was probably fairly conservative. So based on experience, you're finding out that it's actually much better than presented in the feasibility study?
So what you're referring to are three different scenarios that were studied. And that wasn't three years, that was just three different snapshots. So thank you for the clarification. We were very conservative as a committee in setting the criteria for those snapshots. We basically pulled all the load data, electricity usage throughout the region, with your permission, of course, from PG&E, and then we hired the best of the best to analyze it and tell us what it looks like compared to what we're getting now in terms of renewable rates, et cetera, et cetera. So what you saw, you have to set criteria for each thing you're studying, and that's what you saw there. And the first scenario was actually really, really conservative. We said no more than rate parity, we're not going to pay more. We want the highest level of renewables that we can buy within the state of California, not unbundled renewable energy credits, which is really sort of blue smoke and mirrors renewable, but real renewables. We want to know what we can get in terms of rolling out the highest level of greenhouse gas reduction and renewables. And that was the quote that you heard from Bruce. We can actually get to 59% on-rate parity with renewables purchased within the state. That was scenario one. There's two other scenarios. They had different assumptions. One had more hydro, one had some renewables from outside the state, and one, we asked, could we save money? And in fact, we can save money. We can get 3% lower than PG&E, and we can still hit a 28% renewable portfolio, which is a little bit above what we're getting now from PG&E. So we did that because you want to have some benchmarks. You want to be able to say, if we sort of turn the dials here and there, more renewables or less, you saw the difference between Sonoma and Marin, how is it going to affect rates? How is it going to affect our ability to roll out all of our customers within two years, to Councilwoman Termini's point? So when we form the JPA, those three scenarios are our starting point for that board to consider the criteria that you would set. And what you've gotten before you, and Rich has got it, is a series of recommendations from your Project Development Advisory Committee on best practices and scenario setting, so that you'll have lots of information and lots of fodder for discussion. But your committee said from the beginning, "We don't assume anybody in this region's going to want to pay more. We think it's got to be rate parity or less." And so that was a very conservative assumption from the beginning.
Any more questions?
Sure.
So I noticed you're talking about acceptance, acceptance in the community. So are there users that, let's say because of long-term contracts or something else about their particular profile that makes it hard for, let's say, 100% acceptance?
Right, that's a really great question. So remember the state-enabling legislation. If your council votes to join the JPA with other early adopter partners, you have basically said that all of your rate payers within the city of Capitola are opted in to the community choice energy option. If they choose to stay with PG&E, they'll have four opportunities to opt out. So they have a choice, and they have a choice to go back if they want as well. So there's that. In this study, another conservative criteria is we didn't look at any of the major, what we call power purchase agreement customers. So there are some really major customers. I would say the Seaside Company, UCSC, CSU MB, they purchase because of, they have aggregated their own usage, and they're out in the marketplace purchasing renewables. UCSC is choosing to pay a lot more for their energy because they want 100% renewable energy, and they've, and actually, the students have taxed themselves to do that, or they pay extra on their fees. So there are definitely lots of power purchase agreements, not lots, but there's about 400 of those in our region. They were not counted in this analysis. This is for regular rate payers who buy their electricity from PG&E.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Thanks for the memory upgrade.
No problem.
Jenny, I was fortunate to...
It's complex.
I was fortunate enough to sit in on a couple of the meetings, so I'm completely up to date, and I think it's exciting. I'm looking forward to moving forward with this project. So thank you for your presentation.
My pleasure.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this topic? Seeing that, I'll close it and bring it back for recommendation.
I'll move the staff recommendation. That's about it.
I'll second. This hasn't been to the Commission on the Environment, has it? This is a perfect topic for them.
No, but they're, they're very much aware of it and very high on this idea. And I might add that, if I understand it correctly, no one gets locked into this. I mean, if the public can, can sign up and be part of this and then decide not to, it's not like we're, we're trying to corral the citizens of Capitola into any particular party.
Next time, let's take it to the committees, if we can, just to get their input and, and to inform them about what's going on, and give them a chance to...
Well, it's, it's one of the things we're now empowering the city manager to do, and the committee outreach is one of them.
So the Commission on the Environment has discussed this. It's had a presentation, certainly not this presentation and not the information you have before you now, but they, they have discussed it and have supported the idea of the community choice energy.
Oh, good.
And it's on, it's on one of their work plans to support it.
Yeah.
Thank you for that information. So we have a motion and a second. Any other comments?
Just discussion. So Jamie, how do you see, supposedly we pass it, join the JPA when the time comes. How do you see this city engaging in terms of staff time and your involvement? And I know Rich is on the, the committee that's working with Jenny and Bruce's office, so if you could give some comments on that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the, I think, I think the key question is going to come down to the governance for the JPA, and I think the council is well-aware that we have numerous JPAs that we do here regionally with different kinds of representation from the city onto the JPA board. So that, what the governance, governance structure would look like hasn't been determined and would be probably one of the chief conversations that'll take place next. And then, at the end of the day, depending on whether it's elected representation from the city or staff-level representation on the board, that would affect what sort of time commitments would be necessary from the city to participate. But frankly, I think simple answer is relatively low. This is not a working board. This is going to be an expert board to set policy, and there would be staff of the new JPA that would be doing the work.
Thank you. No questions? Okay. And we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Supervisor McPherson, Ms. Johnson, thank you for coming to Capitola and keeping us in the loop.
I think we should be electing more people from the population that also share heritage with us coming.
With that, move on to item C, is a considered request for widening of Kennedy Drive to allow, and I'm confused here, I've got one that says two-hour parking, one's four-hour parking. What is the correct?
I apologize where the, it is, it is four-hour parking. It was first believed to be two-hour. I apologize for any confusion.
For a four-hour parking. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you is a request from Santa Adarius Rustic Ale's to widen Kennedy Drive in two areas to provide on-street, legal on-street parking. The brewery is located at 103 to 105 Kennedy Drive. The business has been quite successful up there and has resulted in a parking shortage. Customers to the brewery have been parking illegally on Kennedy Drive. The police have issued tickets up there in the past, and recently, they have requested no parking signs along Kennedy to try and take care of it. Staff inspected the site and determined there is a sufficient area to widen the shoulder and re-stripe the road a little bit to provide some legal on-street parking. The owners of Santa Adarius have offered to pay for this widening, and in doing so, they have requested that the new parking be four hours to prevent vehicle storage in those spots. Just some pictures here to kind of show you what's going on. You can see, we're talking about on the highway side of Kennedy Drive. I have a map in a minute that I'll show, but I, so you can see the cars are parking on the shoulder here. You can see the cars driving in there, having to go over the mid-stripe over here to pass the parked cars. The area to be widening has actually been cleared already. It has not been paved. You can see we're going to widen the shoulder out to the fence here, move the center line over to provide an eight-foot parking area. This is the plan that actually Earthworks, who's a neighbor up there, who would be doing the work, prepared. You can see, so here's Chittenden Lane, here's Rosedale Avenue, Santa Adarius is over there. So the, the reason I want to show is we're going to have an eight-foot parking area, 12-foot traffic lane, and 12-foot traffic lane. We're widening it, what's out there now is two 13-and-a-half-foot traffic lanes and no parking area. So by moving the traffic lanes down to 12 feet and widening it by five feet, we do get enough for off-street parking. So here's the map, just to orient everybody. So this is Monterey Avenue, Kennedy Drive. This is our, the city corporation yard here. Earthworks is here. Santa Adarius is over here, and this is the Cabrio, Oklahoma State, is right here, which is located on Rosedale. The two areas in green I've shown here are where they will be widening. It's on the freeway side of Kennedy Drive. It's a total of about 210 feet they're going to widen, which would be about 16 parking spaces. And as part of this, where the red, dark red line is, we will be putting up no parking. So we will then have no parking along the rest of Kennedy. And that should take care of the traffic problems that have developed up there. Our recommendation is to authorize the Public Works Department to issue an encouragement permit for the widening of Kennedy Drive to create 16 on-street parking spaces, and adopt a resolution designating these spaces as four-hour parking, and to try and control people from parking there, particularly campers and things like that. We are recommending no parking from midnight to 5:00 PM, 5:00 AM. We did notice this item to all the properties with 300 feet of the, of Santa Adarius. Actually, we picked them as the hub. And I know the owner from Santa Adarius is in the audience and probably would like to make a presentation.
Before you, let me see if there are any questions first. Okay, I'm sorry. Any questions?
Steve, would you go back to the site plan?
This one?
Why aren't we connecting those two green lines? It seems like there's room out there.
Actually, there's, the problem is there's two driveways in and out of Earthworks, and with their large equipment, if there's any vehicles parked in here, right now, this is designated as no parking.
Right.
Because we've had trouble getting in and out, or Earthworks had trouble getting in and out. We don't think, even with widening there, we would be able to do it, so that's why they've done it in two spaces. It's just so they can get their large equipment in and out of their driveways.
Is there any rationale to extending the one on the right? I'm trying to maximize the, the benefit here.
You know, this was their proposal. Certainly, it could be extended further down Chittenden Lane or in this area. This is what they, this is what they proposed, and you could ask them if they're interested in doing it further.
Well, perhaps we could participate, you know, in the interest of providing more public parking, take a look at it, bring it back to us, but just a thought.
Any other questions?
I've, I've had the same conversation. I've been out there where it extends much strewny homes down towards the Capitol and those, so I think considering extending it. And I totally agree with Michael, we do have partnerships like on the Espinoza with, with the, you know, our businesses, so.
Yeah, I, I would encourage us to try and improve something tonight so we can get the parking in there. If we want to look at extending it further, we could, we could do that independently, probably, but let's try and resolve upon, because I would like to get the no parking signs up, too.
Questions? No questions. With that, we'll have the applicant make a presentation. Welcome, Adara.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council people. Thanks for having us here tonight. As Steve adequately described, we've sort of become way more successful than we ever imagined we would be at this funky little location in Capitola. And while we don't need significant extra parking on a regular basis, there are a couple weekends a month, I would say, where we just get really, really busy, and there's nowhere to park, and it has created this problem where people have been parking all along Kennedy Drive. So staff approached me, let me know that the police department has been concerned about this for a while, has, and has asked them to either redstripe it or put up no parking signs all along Kennedy Drive, and would I be prepared to pay for the widening of it instead. And so I'm here to offer to, you know, extend the road out, was it eight feet, to the side to create those parking spaces. We could certainly talk about extending it more. Cost was the reason why. We'd sort of limited it to where we limited it. I think Earthworks is giving me a good price, but as you know, paving and demolishing roads is an expensive proposition. So I can answer any questions that you have about the project.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay. Oh, you have a question?
Yeah, I, you know, I talked to people at, not Earthworks, but at the pump, Capitola Pump.
Capitola Pump.
Right. I was very impressed that you've apparently worked with them in the past to mitigate parking problems, and they're very supportive of your plans. I assume Earthworks is very supportive of your plans because they went out there and started to work right away before the permit was given, so.
Yeah, Capitola Pump, and actually, I believe as a, just as a courtesy, we'll be striping...
Right.
...within, in front of Capitola Pump as well. They don't use their space on the weekends, and so they've been kind enough to let us use their parking on the weekends, but it's not currently striped. So we're going to stripe that as well, so that it's, we just want to make it very clear where there's parking and where there isn't parking, so that it's clear to us, it's clear to police, it's clear to our customers, it's clear to everybody where you can and can't park out there.
So you might not have thought about it, but how much extra parking would you like? I mean, past Chittenden towards Monterey, have you considered how much more you'd like?
I hadn't even considered it. You know, that's about 16 spaces. If we could throw in an extra 10 spaces, or nine spaces to get it up to 25 spaces, I think that that would be great. Like I said, we don't, we don't need it on a regular basis, but we have gotten some, like, national attention around our beers, and we get people who come from all over the state to come and visit us. And actually, they spend weekends in Capitola and kind of make a whole vacation out of coming to drink beer in Capitola and, and spend time and money here. So it would be nice, you know, when we have those times, if there are places where people can park.
No, I, I have friends that if they can't make it, they phone us and tell us to stand in line.
Yeah, I know.
So we've done that many times.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there, is there anyone else from the audience that would like to speak on this topic?
Yes, welcome. My name is Manuel Viera, and I'm the guy that you have not talked about. I'm the one that owns the Mobile Home Park. I'm the one that has about 70 families living there that's being affected by the success of this business, which I do support, but they don't, you know, you've got, even this map to this date, you have Rosedale going through my park, that you guys don't pay for my roads, you don't maintain it, but, and, and, and people get hit on it because people try to make a shortcut. So I wish that you guys would, would address that Kennedy dies on Kennedy. There's no more Rosedale at that point. Mr., am I correct or not correct? But you could draw up the drawings like this, affects 70 families that we maintain. I just resurfaced the road out there, and residents do have people that walk it from Rosedale, the real Rosedale now below, from my park, parking to go up to see, I'm not sure if it's a winery or the brewery. I have no problems with the, of the success of the business, but I do have a problem when maps even of the city is drawing through my property that I pay taxes on. I maintain the property. Residents have to suffer with people driving through there. We've got people that have been hit out there already before. I have a barricade gate that's remote-controlled for my residents that's been driven through, you could talk to Mr. Chief, please, probably about 25 times. And it happens during the weekends of...
The weekends of Saturdays, when you have people coming from out of town.
Just address the county.
Well, no, I'm just, I'm going to address, I never met her in my life, okay? So I gave her my card so we could talk later about it. Maybe we could find some remedy between us, because God forbid if John McCoy will do anything about it. Now, in addition, at the end of Kennedy, at the end of Kennedy, if you're telling me that's Rosedale, what are you going to, who's going to fix those big potholes at the end? Because that's, if you guys consider it city road, you need to maintain it. And I know that you drive your bicycle through there, and I don't know if you hit that pothole yet, but it will give you a flat real quick. On her parking proposal, has not been known about it despite that little card, I want to make sure I thank you guys. It's funny, I finally got a card about what's going on around my neighborhood. Thank you very much, besides just getting the bill at my address. But her parking proposal, I agree upon it. There's one thing I do disagree upon, I'm sorry, but when that big project came up, we lost about 10 spaces for visitors parking on the park, okay? We have four visitors parking now. We used to have like six, I think like 16 of them. The roadway should be clear for, for the least the people that live in that community right next to an industrial area in this business to be able to park in the evenings and do time restrictions maybe from eight, eight to eight, or eight to nine, you know, talking about during, whatever their curfew is, I'm sorry, whatever, you're the one who decides, so. Whatever the curfew is on their CCNRs on their building, have the, have the time restriction at that point. And that's all, like I said, I do support the parking. I do not support how you guys draw up the map and, and forget about the poor people that vote for you, that lives in the park there. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, sir. And I'll write my stuff. Go ahead.
Greetings, council members. My name is Frederick Coaklin, and I'm one of those 70 people that live in the Cabrillo Mobile Home Estates. I think it's a great idea that she wants to put the parking in there, but people from, as Manny was saying, there's not a whole lot of overnight parking in Cabrillo anymore. So people from Cabrillo have been parking on Rosedale for quite a while, and it's never many cars, three, four, five at a night. So if you guys do approve this and do approve some parking restrictions, I think you should consider maybe some overnight parking permits for the residents of Cabrillo. So, instead of just four hours and then towing in the evenings. That's all I got to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Richard Lippi. I just have one question. On the four-hour parking, I'd like to know if, if somebody can explain how that's going to work, you know, how it's going to be metered or monitored, and can somebody reinstate their space, or can they move five feet and call it a new space? I'm just curious.
Well, typically, police officers would go up and chalk tires and come back four hours. So somebody, you know, drove around the block and reparked again, the chalk line's going to be gone, same as any other time zone. So yes, if you move your car, even a couple spaces, four hours would restart up again.
I think there's some language that have to drive around the block or drive a certain amount of feet to relocate it, but thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Anyone else in the audience like to speak?
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Jim Ray, and I'm representing my girlfriend and her daughter that live inside the park also. They have two vehicles, so it'd be hard for them to park their vehicles because they only got one space where they, where they live at, one parking space. So she's got to maneuver her cars back and forth to accommodate this four-hour parking, which is a, going to be a real hassle for the people that live in the back part where that Manny was talking about, the gate. There's, there's some units back in the back that join the brewery back there. So we're limited on parking where we're at right now, so Kennedy, I mean, Kennedy Drive is our only alternative to park our vehicles. So this four-hour thing to try to, you know, enforce it, I don't see that it's going to work either, you know? I mean, I'm, I'm not against the brewery or anything like that, but a weekend-to-weekend basis, sometimes it's easy to park, but sometimes it's really hard, especially when she has like hundreds, 100 people on one weekend when they, a beer comes out or whatever, it's, it's, it's a real mess. So I'm against it.
Thank you for your comments.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else in the public like to speak on this topic? Come on up, this is your chance.
My name is Lou Francisco, and I live at Cabrillo Mobile Home Park. And then I would like to give you a comment because most of the people who lives in the park, we had two vehicles, but our kids is growing up, so now they're like 18, ready to drive a car. So definitely we need more space to, for an extra vehicle on the Kennedy Street, maybe more than four hours overnight or, you know, so four hours is not enough, probably add extra space for overnight.
Parking.
Because it's, it's very short period, and we need some more space. Because most of the people has like two or three vehicles and their kids start driving, and so we need more space. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, my name is Juan Chacon, and I live on 930 Rosedale, too. And maybe this could be nice, we have a permit, maybe? A permit to people who live there on 930 Rosedale on the street to park overnight? People who are to work, you know, leave their car overnight? That would be a solution.
Okay, that's all your comments? Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to comment on this? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this, I'll bring it back for discussion. Councilman Sherman.
Could we have the chief come up and talk to us?
Sure.
I know it's been a short day, chief. I, I fully, welcome, and I fully appreciate the concern about overnight parking coming from the police department, but also I appreciate the fact this is a pretty secluded area, and having parking there overnight could be uncomfortable, especially with the cabover, camper parking that we battle with constantly. What are your thoughts about their remaining four-hour parking, but having a special permit for neighborhood residents to park overnight?
Well, I think we get challenges along the way from all the neighborhoods because we are constantly asked about how we can regulate a permit program, whether it's in the zone or out of the zone. And it becomes a balancing act on how we are able to do that if we can. I mean, if we had to, we obviously would, but it becomes a difficult process for us.
Okay. It's what I anticipated to hear, but I wanted to.
Do you have a question? We'll have discussion on this later, I just wondered if you have a question for the chief.
Yes, I do. Go ahead.
Okay. So there's been some comments that people have been parking up there. I mean, apparently there's overflow from the Mobile Home Park, so I can understand they have more cars than they anticipated. So what have you observed up there right now that might be attributed to the Mobile Home Park residents using that area to park?
Well, it's all complaint-driven for us, and when cars are in the middle of the roadway next to the curb line, that's when we become concerned, especially if it ends up on both sides, then we narrow the space and you can't get a fire truck through. We have to have a safe passageway. And so that is the concern for us, and it's complaint-driven for us.
Okay, so that's usually when the brewery has quite a few customers maybe from event. But how about at night? Are you seeing overnight cars or anything of that sort?
You know, again, it's complaint-driven, it's, you know, there are other areas of the city that we're, you know, focusing our efforts on, so it's not something that we monitor on a nightly basis.
Any other questions?
Thank you, chief. Who'd like to start it off?
I'll be happy to.
Go ahead.
Well, the elephant in the room is that it's a wonderful, successful business that doesn't have enough parking, and should probably look for another location. And because this is, you know, it's causing a little bit of an issue up there. So I think this is a Band-Aid, you know, and it, you know, it's fine for a while, but I mean, it's not really good to have people parking on a frontage road like that and walking down the road. I mean, it's not the safest place, but, you know, it, it would work. But it's, I think we need to consider the residents and see if there's anything we can do to, to create some, some spaces for them, because we've just, if we, if we do this, it's going to take away their, some of their parking. And they should try to keep their parking on their own site also. Maybe they can create a little more parking on their own property. Maybe we can, I don't know, create any other parking there, but.
I don't see us removing any parking from Cabrillo by doing this.
No, no, if it was the four hour without overnight parking, the people there that are parking there overnight now.
If we just made it city park and just like a regular street.
Yeah.
That's true.
Yeah.
So we're just, we're not taking anything away, we're just not giving them anything.
Well, yeah, I mean, if, if, if we enforce it, well, we'd be taking it away, but that enforcement's, you know, the other issue, but, but I'm really happy that you're doing so well, but it's just creates a problem. And I'm trying to think if we've seen that before in town where we've had somebody that came in and was Caruso's.
About the entire village.
The, yeah, there's a few other places, you know, and we, it's just, it's the age-old problem in Capitola of parking.
Let's let everybody weigh in, and then we'll have a discussion. Jac, would you like to weigh in next?
Well, I'm very happy Adarius is such a successful business, and I fully support this effort. I'd also like to point out that you've created a problem, but you're stepping up to play to solve the problem and putting your own money in it and creating parking where no parking exists right now. So I'm fully in support of this. I'd even like to go further. I like the idea of extending it and if we could do some sort of cost share. I am at a quandary right now, though, trying to figure out what is actually happening there right now from the need, obviously, from the Mobile Home Park. They, they have need for extra parking, so I don't know the answer. I don't, I haven't been up there at night. I don't know if they're parking illegally, and, you know, obviously our police have greater problems to deal with, and so by creating problem, we're actually taking, I mean, by creating parking spaces, we're actually taking away with stuff that's being used right now, maybe on the shoulder. I just don't know. So I kind of like the answer to that question. But overall, I fully support this. Creating a permit program might solve it in one way, but in another way it might not because we're, we're having a business creating, creating parking and then having that taken up by a permit program. So I sort of have a problem with that. Those are my comments.
Councilman Sherman.
To be clear, that the spaces that Sante Adarius is, is paying to create will be public parking. You don't have to be at the brewery to use these parking spaces.
Right.
That's the baseline. I like the idea of permit overnight, but not necessarily permit where you can pull in and use that parking space and be there all day and all night. I think a permit that allows from, I don't know, whenever the closing time of the brewery is till 8:00 A.M. the next day, it, it doesn't do any, it doesn't do any harm. And I think that since this is, this is particularly, yes?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Sherman, I think that, as the chief, as the police chief stated, administering permit parking is, is time-intensive. It's time-intensive for the staff to issue the permits, it's time-intensive for staff to enforce the permits. So I think our recommendation would probably change a little bit if this was the direction that the council wanted to go. The introduction of no overnight parking was done primarily to prevent issues with campers and overnight camping in that area, really to protect Cabrillo Mobile Home Park from impacts and things like that. Frankly, I think that it was being done out of an abundance of caution, because having overnight parking in relatively unvisited industrial areas can invite that sort of thing. Conversely, Cabrillo Mobile Home Park is the neighbor, it is on the side of the freeway, it might not be people's first choice to park a trailer for the night. So I think rather than implementing a permit parking program overnight off the get-go, our suggestion would be to drop the overnight parking restriction, and if it becomes a problem with trailers, I assume that our friends here would let us know very quickly, and we would address it then.
Well, then, we could do it so that there's four-hour parking.
During the daytime.
Until 10:00 P.M., and then over, you know, overnight parking between 10:00 P.M. and 8:00 A.M. without a permit program, and just see how it goes.
Can I just recommend?
How big will that sign be?
Can I just, a lot of our other parking programs are all 8:00 A.M. to 8:00 P.M. So if, I think that would work.
Right, 8:00 A.M. to 8:00 P.M. four-hour parking, like all the other parking programs, and then we'll, we'll bring it back here if there's an issue. This way, there can be overnight parking. If the, if the police start to tell us it's turning into a campground, no overnight parking. That's it. And the folks at Cabrillo, you, you see any cabovers staying there for two days? Beat on the window for us.
Those are your comments?
Those are my comments and my motion.
Second.
Good. I see it a little bit differently. You know, I, I have to acknowledge that in the zone, there was, there was no parking before. There, there's no parking here, so no one's losing any parking. The business owner has taken the responsibility to add parking. I mean, if there was a request from Cabrillo to add parking, they could have done the same thing the business owner's done, come to us, made a request, and added parking for their sake. I think there's a problem in Capitola with all people adding more cars, and we, we enforce it very heavily that, that there's a demand to park those cars on your own property. I have a problem with, with the business paying for the parking and then other people parking that parking. If there was a, if there was an interest to have a shared portion for this parking, it would make more sense to me. I, I see the green zones as, you know, two zones, we have an A and a B, and I think it was mentioned earlier about some kind of a city partnership for the, for the parking. I'm not in favor of that either. I don't see us as a city as someone that plays, you know, this doesn't fit the model where we do sharing for, for business to add parking. If the business owner did want to extend that second section, I'm going to call it B, I, I would have no problem, you know, supporting something, they could extend it all the way up to Chittenden if they wanted to pay, and if they were willing to pay for more parking, it would be at your discretion. And in, and in this case, you know, if, if there was some kind of an agreement that wanted to be worked out with Cabrillo for either, either sharing or some kind of a business cooperates and consensual that, you know, people park in Lot B instead of Lot A's to facilitate the use of the business, this would be a cooperative kind of thing that would, would go along. It sounds like the motion on the floor is for, to approve the project as designed.
Four-hour parking from 8:00 A.M. to 8:00 P.M.
Yeah. And, and the recommendation you want to do is we're going to enact something, or we're going to see how it goes?
We're just going to let it go, make it be 8:00 A.M. to 8:00 P.M. four-hour parking.
Okay.
And then no restriction on overnight parking. And as an aside, you know, we do this for the benefit of businesses all through the village. We do two-hour and three-hour parking. We pay for all of it. So, you know, us creating 16 parking spaces on our nickel doesn't bother me because that's what cities do. We make parking spaces.
Well, largely, when we make parking places, we generate revenue from them sometimes. The other thing.
If you've seen the cash register at Adarius, we're doing just fine.
I, I understand. I, I, that, that's not my issue. I, I don't have a problem with the, with the 12 hours. I guess the, the concern is, the chief, now, I don't want to create this to be an area that we're going to go have to monitor and, and cite. And, and, and we're, we're put in a situation where like, if you allow something to happen, it could happen, so we're going to have to take the advice of the business owner if all of a sudden it feels that the spaces are being compromised. And I just hope the council accepts that if that comes back, we're going to need to enact what was originally requested, because I just have a, a problem with someone paying for parking than it used for someone else. Everybody has an extra car they need to park.
But it's primary, but it's primarily for them, it's probably 80% for the brewery rather than for the residents, or 90%.
And it's a city, it's a city right-of-way, so, you know, we are not able to restrict, you know, city property to a particular business's parking.
We can put the time limit.
Whether they pay for it or not.
Right. But I mean, the included fact that it is being paid for, I mean, it has some concern to me, and, and the fact that we do have the right to, to enact the hours of its use.
Yeah.
And I mean, and in this case, I mean, I would love to see a situation where both parties were equally satisfied, and I got the feeling that the business owner is willing to accept the eight to eight, and, and in my mind, on a trial period until it deems to be a problem. So this really relies on Cabrillo to be good neighbors. You know, if you need to park your car there overnight, but if you just leave your car there for two or three days at a time and interrupt the business, then this is not what I consider a good neighbor plan. So I'm willing to go along with the recommendation. I, I, I would love the people up there to all get along, have a successful business, happy neighbors, and go with that. Steve, you have a comment?
No, I just want to amend the resolution to what I believe you guys are trying to adopt here if we can.
Where, where did we go wrong?
No, no, you're doing good. I just want to, we're going to amend the, the resolution under the "now therefore be hereby resolved." The last sentence will now read, "Said restrictions will be in effect from 8:00 A.M. to 8:00 P.M."
Correct.
Thank you.
Stephanie, comment?
Let's try to remember this lesson, that when a business comes to us that has the potential for being really successful like this and having, doesn't, obviously is not going to have enough parking for it, that they need to have, we need to have a better parking plan. This is, this is not good planning to, to plan a really successful, wonderful business like this in there, that they are, they're, they're very, very popular, and then it has, you know, it doesn't have adequate parking, so they end up on the frontage road and people are having to do, I mean, that's just not good planning.
And this is, this is definitely a one of. I mean, their business conforms to all of our parking requirements in our zoning code. I mean, their business conforms to all of our parking requirements in our zoning code. We never, no one, when they wrote the zoning code, ever imagined that someone would have a brewery tasting room that would have 100 cars associated with it.
Well, I don't know. I don't know what the, I don't want, I don't know what the market's.
No, it fits, it fits our zoning code right now for their square footage, they have more than enough parked, they're actually overparked. This is, you know, a new thing, an anomaly, so.
I'm not sure, breweries are pretty popular, you know, pretty popular, a lot of people going there.
I think breweries are going to be popular. I think that, you know, no one, I don't think the owner anticipated it would be what it is. I think they're making an effort here, they're investing money into solving the problem, and I think that quite frankly, if they realize that this is going to grow bigger than what they expected, they may decide to move on their own, so, and I don't think we need to dictate that. I think this is up to them. I think this is a great reach-out, and I think, I feel like the, the Mobile Home Park and the business is going to benefit if everybody respects everybody's, what they're doing there, so.
But there are one word, the mall. I think mall.
Any other comments? Shall I call a vote?
I, I do have a comment. As Mike said, this is a good neighbor thing. These are new parking spots, but they could be abused. It is true, they are public parking, and it's being paid for by a business in the area that has realized they need to provide parking for their business customers, which I, I think that's great. I wish more people in town did that. But also the neighbors, let's not abuse it. This is going to be a partnership, obviously, when you come home from work, maybe you could use it, but let's try to be good neighbors. Thank you.
With that, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's all get along up on that street that's not called Rosedale, okay?
Well, change the map.
Yeah, thank you.
I do, I do have something else, can we have last comments?
You can have a final comment before I adjourn, I mean, go ahead.
Okay. So I've, I've been going to Adarius for a number of years, and I have a lot of friends that go to Adarius, including people in the Mobile Home Park, and I would like to change something and make it possible that we have food trucks available up there, and I'd like to have that on the.
That's not on the agenda.
I know it's not on the agenda, I'd like it to be considered for a future agenda. I've had so many people talk to me about how that would be a great addition to that business.
And let's, let's remember, if we agenda's this, this is contrary to the use permit, we would have to change their use permit, that is a big statement, just saying.
Mr. City Manager, do you have any comments on this suggestion?
Well, I'd like to agenda's it. I don't want to discuss it right now.
It's not agenda's it unless, unless the business owner is requesting it. If they, if they request it, then that's one thing, but we, you know, we shouldn't put things on the agenda for some, for a business.
I hear your request, I ask the city manager for a comment. Does any, any comments or concerns on this? Councilman Sherman brought up a point, I just want some clarification or input.
You know, pursuant to our municipal code, council members can request an item on a future agenda, doing so in open session.
Okay.
Mr. Bertrand has done that here. Obviously, if the feedback from the rest of the council is that this doesn't have a lot of legs or is generating a lot of controversy, Mr. Bertrand may, may wish to consider it. Otherwise, the mayor and I will have to work together to try to find a time when we can get it on the.
I would like to offer my support to his idea, but on a broader note, I don't want to focus this on Santa Adarius Brewery. I would like to consider in our community.
Right.
The allowance of food trucks on private property.
You would like to bring back a discussion on food trucks in general?
In general, on private property.
I, I totally agree, I would not want to just say for Senatorius. Definitely. I, I think, I think Capitola has to catch up.
Hang on, I say, city attorney, you have a comment? You're grabbing your mic.
I was just getting ready to make one, if I had to.
Are you okay?